Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the March 5, 2018 City Council Work Session. I'd ask you please to all silence any electronic things that make noise, and if you need to take a phone call, we ask that you please exit the chamber and take it on the outside. With that, we have a rather brief agenda tonight, but first up is a presentation from Honeywell. And Mrs. Miller, why don't you do the introductions?
Very good, thank you. Do you want me to use the microphone?
Yes, please. I don't know why I have three.
Okay, very good. Okay, Council, thank you very much for allowing us to come and brief you on this project with Honeywell. It's the Guaranteed Energy Savings Performance Contracting Initiative. I'll be going over the background and introductions with you, and then I'm going to transfer the controls here to Michelle Peterson from Honeywell, who will go over the process more in depth. She'll take you through a GSEPC overview, the technical approach, what we consider an investment-grade audit, a review of the timeline, and then a question-and-answer period at the end. So, thank you very much. All right, so the city explored the concept of a guaranteed savings-energy-performance contracting initiative last summer after several repairs were necessary for the HVAC system at the Salisbury Police Department. We realized that a critical failure of the HVAC system could be very detrimental to the operations of the police department. As we explored the concept further of looking at what a replacement cost would be for the HVAC system, it is quite an exorbitant cost. So as we were looking for ways to possibly fund this initiative, the idea of a guaranteed savings-energy-performance contract came to mind, and we looked to possibly then broaden the scope to look at other energy savings improvements that could be done throughout the city of Salisbury. So after that process, Honeywell was competitively selected in October out of a pool of six vendors with whom the city would contract to explore the process of this guaranteed savings-energy performance contract. We entered into a contract at that time with Honeywell for what we call an investment-grade energy audit, or an IGA, okay? And that's the process that we're involved in right now. This IGA, it's really the vehicle through which Honeywell identifies, evaluates, and presents a recommended package of measures associated with energy savings and projected costs. So concurrently, though, with the IGA process, Honeywell and the City Department of Finance have conducted financing workshops to identify the most appropriate funding mechanisms for the energy savings improvements. Debt service will be paid from savings in the city's utility bills with additional savings anticipated. Additionally, low-interest loans, MEA grants, and Delmarva power rebates are being actively investigated as additional funding opportunities. Now, if through the process of the IGA, if, again, these guaranteed energy savings are determined to be reasonably sufficient to cover all the investment costs, reasonably sufficient as defined by the city, okay? The city then has the option to enter into the guaranteed savings-energy-performance contract with Honeywell. Now, it's this, the energy performance contract, that will provide for the design, installation, and implementation of the energy conservation measures. The resulting energy savings from the ECMs, or the energy conservation measures, are guaranteed by Honeywell, okay? Now, let me just briefly introduce the team that's assigned to the project. On this project for the city of Salisbury, I will be the contracting officer, okay? My role, therefore, is to handle all contractual business with Honeywell and to coordinate all activities of the contract administration team. CQI associates will be the contracting officer's representative. CQI associates is headed up by Mr. Richard Anderson. You're all familiar with Mr. Richard Anderson, with the work he does for other energy initiatives for the city of Salisbury. Amanda Pollak will be the program office representative from the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Amanda and/or designated member of her team will provide direction and assistance to Honeywell, including attendance at any contractor status meetings should we enter into a performance contract with Honeywell. Keith Cordrey will be the program office representative, obviously from the Department of Finance, and he will direct and implement the project financing. From the Honeywell team, Michelle Peterson, this is Ms. Michelle Peterson. She's the city of Salisbury account manager. She manages the process and transitions of the team from development to implementation to follow-up services. Bob Breslin is the lead project manager to the city of Salisbury's project. He manages and coordinates all activities during the installation and construction phase, including training. He's the direct point of contact with full decision-making responsibility. Bob Tadona and Kevin Peck are both solution development engineers. Bob is the supervisor of solution development engineers in the Mid-Atlantic, along with being a certified Maryland engineer. He's responsible for the auditing, evaluation, and energy design of energy conservation measures. Kevin is the lead engineer identifying and developing energy conservation measures for the city, including savings calculations. Kevin's also an engineer. Not listed on the slides is also Dan Madden. Dan is the regional sales manager for Honeywell. Dan provides leadership in developing effective solutions by ensuring engagement of appropriate Honeywell resources. I'm going to turn it over now to Michelle Peterson to give you additional insight into the process.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you for having us. We are excited to be here. First of all, we are excited to have been selected by the city and certainly thrilled to be working with you on this important initiative. So, can I go and see your page down there? So, we wanted to give you an overview of guaranteed savings-energy-performance contracting. So here you can see a process at the high level. Honeywell was an initial pioneer of energy savings-performance contracting back in the late 1970s. So through that time period and 6,000 contracts later, and we've certainly developed the process and certainly have best-in-class methodologies within that process, but this gives you an idea of where we are. As Jennifer said, the city made a decision to explore a performance contract. They went through an RFQ. They went through a competitive process. They selected Honeywell, and now we're at the investment-grade audit phase. And this is the phase where our team, Kevin and Bob, and Bob Tadona, are here to develop those energy conservation measures. Bob is the project manager, and Kevin and Bob is the engineers on the project. From there, we'll move into financing, and then, obviously, implementation, which is construction, the actual installation of those infrastructure improvements, on to measurement and verification, and then ongoing services. So that's just a high-level overview of the process. So what is energy savings-performance contracting? How does it benefit the city of Salisbury, and how does it benefit your constituents? In the most simplest terms, Salisbury has infrastructure that needs to be upgraded. We're looking to find savings to help fund those infrastructure improvements. So it's a self-funded infrastructure renewal process. For us, the primary, one of the top priorities is the police headquarters. Certainly, the heating, ventilation, air conditioning issues there, the mechanical issues at that building are certainly a priority. But what we do is we look to find savings, so money in existing budgets to improve infrastructure, fund those deferred maintenance items, fund those known problems, fund those known maintenance areas that are really giving you a headache and really costing you money as a city. We're also, within this, we'll get into some of the high-level energy conservation measures we're looking at. To Jennifer's point, in the process, one of the benefits is that Honeywell guarantees the savings. So it's a guarantee on the performance of the solution as well as the dollar savings itself. So if the solution does not work out the way that we've engineered it, we will write you a check for the difference between what we said the savings would be and what it actually is. And then, because it is also a guarantee on the performance of the solution, we will come back at our cost to fix what may be wrong, or to reanalyze it and look at how to make it better, because, obviously, we want the program to achieve the savings that we said it would. And then certainly with that, we do have ongoing measurement and verification to make sure that those savings are being achieved. So we talked about the high-level process, and there are certain methodologies within that process that we've certainly perfected over the years, and we wanted to just give you a sense of what's involved in the technical approach for the investment-grade audit, just so that you know that there's a lot of work being done between our team, CQI, and Jennifer, and certainly a lot of staff. We appreciate the staff time here at the city of Salisbury as well. But certainly, the number-one bullet there is the staff identifies the needs and the wants. Where are the problems at? Where is this deferred maintenance? Where are we having the most maintenance issues? Where do we need a new air handling unit, or where do we need new equipment within our buildings? We look at it from a technical viability standpoint. We look at it from a savings standpoint, and then certainly our project managers involved to make sure that everything that we're doing is constructable and actually can be built. And then there's just certain design guidelines that we have to use. There are certain lighting standards. There are building comparisons that we use to make sure that the savings are achievable, as well as Honeywell best practices. So this investment-grade audit is truly, it's truly a really in-depth process, and a well-documented process that we're currently in right now. We'll have a timeline to share with you in the following slide. But just to give you a sense of what we're looking at, again, this is a category type of energy conservation measures that are being identified, but first and foremost, the police headquarters is our primary focus. But we've got building and street lighting that we're looking to converting to LED. A lot of mechanical retrofits in the city. HVAC is heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system replacements, some retrocommissioning, some building management system upgrades, and then building envelope, things like window seals and installation, and just making sure that the seals of the buildings are tight so that they're not losing cold air, that they're not losing hot air either. And then finally, we have a clear timeline. You'll see that our immediate next step is a 60% review on March 23. And through this process, you can see there's very, very specific progress with actions, and you'll see that we look to come back to you around the July 16 timeframe to present a work session of all of our findings and all the repairs and infrastructure upgrades that are going to be made in the city. So we'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? Just a couple of questions and comments. Your business model, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll try to see if I have it right in my head. You identify the need. You get all the credits we possibly can through grants, et cetera. And then, your interest is the difference between the actual cost and what we get back.
Correct.
Correct. So, and obviously, after 6,000 contracts, you have a good base of knowledge on certain equipment types, given certain areas, et cetera. So how does new technology come in that you have less experience with? Is that where the risk is for both of us? In other words, technology that's relatively new in the market?
I think from a technology standpoint, in terms of technology, do you mean, like, if we'd be putting solar in, or...
Whatever is out there that maybe we don't even know about.
Know about. Some of those things, we brought to the city, and we're working with the city to make those decisions on, to make sense, to see if it makes sense to introduce that technology, or maybe we're just not quite ready for that yet.
Okay.
So it's really a collaborative, it's really a collaborative process.
We're a little gun-shy with new, untested technology.
The last one costs us a couple hundred million dollars.
Yeah, a couple hundred million. So we're a little gun-shy there. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page. I think certainly you have enough data and information based on your accounts that you've worked on to know what you're doing, and that's a good thing from our perspective. I have a business background, so you'll have to forgive my, I'm thinking in terms of dollars and cents. Is there a, there's obviously a percentage of return that you're expecting.
Sure.
Is there, have you ever done anything where you share a portion of that return back to us, or is it strictly based on the savings that we get directly from the upgrades we make?
You get the full savings.
You get the whole savings.
We don't share any of that with you. And we have an open book pricing model, and as part of the procurement process, we had to provide a percentage of our hard costs for the project. So the city's, that was part of it.
That answers my question. That's fine. That's mine.
Yeah, I mean, that was probably the one question I had the last one.
But I think, but to the technologies, to the technology question, though, I think this would be a time when you would really want to experiment with new technology, because Honeywell is taking the risk for that. So if the solution doesn't work, again, if the performance of the solution doesn't work, we're responsible for making it, we're responsible for making it work.
I just don't want to lose any more hair, because, obviously, we've been through it.
Sure. And unlike a traditional design-build process, what makes this exceptionally, what makes this an exceptional process for you and puts a risk on Honeywell is, at the end of the day, there's no finger pointing. We are responsible, Bob Breslin is responsible for everything. So there's no, he's not going to stand here and say...
Bob, can you raise your hand so that we, will you take a picture of you?
Yeah.
No, but let me clarify that. At the end of the day, the subcontractors are not going to stand here pointing their fingers at each other and saying, "It's your..."
Because they're your responsibility.
Right. Because you're going to be pointing your finger at Bob, saying, "Bob, this is not working."
No, I understand. We understand.
I think the key is that it's a guaranteed contract.
Right.
So if they come back and they say, "Hey, we can guarantee that you're going to save this amount of money," and if it doesn't do it, then we get a check.
Correct. Absolutely. And I think that's correct. And that's another good point, Councilman, is that we provide a firm fixed price. Once we get through the investment-grade audit, we provide a firm fixed price with no change orders. The only change orders that would ever be initiated would be if you asked us to change something. If you said, "Can you do this instead of that?" So we provide a firm fixed price, so you're really protected all the way around in terms of performance, in terms of guaranteed performance savings, and then a firm fixed price at the end of the investment-grade audit.
See, if we had had this type of contract on the wish...
Don't even go. Yes, you're exactly right. Mr. Cordrey is here. I saw him sneak in. Okay, that's what I need from Mr. Cordrey. So the one thing I looked at, you're comfortable with this timetable?
If you are, if you are, the mayor, the mayor's seen the time.
I'm fine with it.
It was actually, this has actually been moved out a month. It was actually compressed back by a month, but unfortunately, we had, it was a little bit harder to get some of the utility data from the utility providers. So that took a little bit longer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Very well done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you in...
Appreciate it.
See you in July.
If we think of anything, I'll call Bob.
Yeah, Bob means, call Bob, exactly.
Thanks very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Hi, Jean. How are you?
I'm very good. Yourself?
Fine.
It's Monday night.
That's it. We lost half the audience, more than half the audience.
It's okay. The important people are here.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Jean, you're up.
Mine is pretty simple.
Where are you taking us?
On February 11, a new law went into place.
Really?
Yes, in the state of Maryland, which has to do with working families and adding in some paid time off for individuals in the state of Maryland who had not previously had access to paid time off. Initially, it was vetoed by the governor, and then it was changed up with the House and the Senate, and so they brought it back. And we did at least get a 60-day pushout as far as the Department of Labor being able to actually file any actions against an employer. We didn't think that that was going to be an issue for us. We just wanted to make sure that we had all of the information from the legislation to be able to incorporate it into a program that, for us, already exists. It's just that we have only allowed sick leave for regular full-time employees. This law basically allows all employees to receive sick leave. As long as they work 30 hours, they can receive one hour of paid sick leave. So we have a variety of statuses with the city of Salisbury, some that are considered temporary, where they're here for a very short period of time, or they're here on our books, they're not necessarily working any hours, because they're going to fill in on a schedule, because different people may be out on family medical leave, so forth and so on. So they get plugged in on a schedule, and they may only work, you know, 20, 40 hours in an entire year. So they may earn one hour, and that can carry over. And if they transfer into a regular full-time status, that will go with them as well. So what we had to do was go through our current policy and massage this in so that...
It complies.
It complies. So one of the biggest changes that we saw was that the law requires that we allow an employee up to 64 hours of paid sick leave of their own sick leave time.
How many?
64 hours. That's if they accrued it. First, you have to work.
Full-time.
A full-time person can do, yes.
Full-time person.
And they already have 64 hours.
Got you.
But a part-time person, if, over the years, they have accumulated 64 hours, they may use up to that amount for a really large group of what they would consider family. It's a quite extensive list. And this is to be used in lieu of going out on family medical leave unless it qualifies as a family member under family medical leave. And basically, it's a very expansive list for a family member, meaning normally, we consider the parent someone who's a stepparent, an adopted parent, or you legally have documents that you are the caretaker of that child. This goes even a little further, that, say, perhaps, the parents are unavailable, and the next-door neighbor is now taking care of this child, waiting for social services and the courts to apply parentis locus, which is the parent. Even though they haven't gotten that legal paperwork, because they've been able to prove enough that they're paying expenses, so forth and so on, we would consider that child their family.
I guess one question I have on the, I was looking through it, but do, when does this accrue? Is this like something that's already in place? Do we have to adjust any hours for people, or...
We already have worked through Munis, our particular software, you know, package that we have right now, and we were able to plug in the total of the 64 hours for those people who currently have that much that they could possibly use. And the others, we now have an accrual counting.
Okay.
So it just looks every 30 hours, you get an hour.
So administratively, it's automatic.
It's automatic.
So some of them, did it just start, or did it go back to a certain...
February 11.
That's when they started accruing the hours?
Yes.
Okay.
That was when the law went into effect, even though, you know, we were sitting on tender hooks there, waiting for them to give us an answer.
Yeah, I mean, you pass a law today and say, "Hey, you got to comply today," and nobody has any info.
Right. They didn't give us too many. It was kind of sketchy.
Well, we're lucky we have Munis. Can you imagine doing this by hand?
It would be...
Oh, no, I couldn't.
It would be a nightmare.
I mean, a small-business guy.
Yeah. And if you have 15 or more employees, this is applicable. Yeah. So it doesn't really, it hasn't impacted us number of hours-wise. We just took, you know, a quick view of last year. We have 27 part-time individuals and a few people who are in, like, a temporary full-time because they're like a contractual position, and it really, it affected us in, if you took an average salary, about $695. So the impact is very minimal.
Yeah. I think the time element, if we didn't have Munis, would have been, probably had to hire a clerk.
I'd have to go on early retirement. Because I didn't want to do all the accounting. So basically, it's called the sick and safe leave policy, but the government allows you to drop off that and safe leave. I mean, if you wanted to call it paid time off, PTO time, and you just put it in through that method, it would just be the number of hours you'd get, one PTO hour for every 30 that you worked. And in any given year, you may use up to 64 hours of paid PTO for a family member's appointments, illness, so forth and so on.
I guess my question is, so if you, we already have a PTO program, but this is specifically designating hours for sick leave, correct?
It will, we won't go under what we already pay our regular full-time employees. They accrue one sick day per month.
Okay.
These individuals, once they hit a certain point, they're regular part-time, they'll never go over a certain amount. The maximum for the year is 40 hours that they can accrue, and they can carry that over to the next year if they haven't used it. Because if they're part-time, most of them make their appointments on their days off.
On their off time.
But you never know. A situation could present itself where you may need that extra time. So we're ready to go to, you know, through the resolution.
Yep.
And at our next city council meeting to sign the terms of law.
Any other questions? Any further questions? We have consensus to move it forward?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks, Jean.
Have a good evening.
Have a good day, or afternoon, or whatever. Okay, Bill?
Mr. Garrett.
You're up. Yeah, I was getting nervous.
How's everybody doing?
Fine.
How are you doing, sir? Good, good, good. I guess the short and succinct version of this is that we had a vehicle that we kind of took from HCDD about two years ago, instead of letting it go to surplus, because we do very limited driving. So we were able to kind of eke two more years out of that vehicle, and I was going to be budgeting for replacement next fiscal year, but it kind of beat me to the punch. So what we're looking at doing is taking some of the savings that we've achieved through the consolidation plan that was implemented last fiscal year. The total for FY '18 is $32,900, and using some of those funds to purchase a vehicle for our department, a used vehicle, because I don't like spending money. So we're going to be going for a used vehicle with relatively low miles on it so that we can use that probably until I retire. That's how little we actually drive. It's, we don't do a whole lot of driving, so the vehicles tend to last. So, what I did was I spoke to Ms. Nichols, President Heath, and Director Pollak, who's in the hallway, and asked for the numbers that you see in the memo here from each of the departments to fund the vehicle, which was a total of, neighborhood of, what is it?
Seventeen hundred.
Yeah, well, seventeen...
Seventeen from the council computer.
Right.
Twelve seventy from clerk.
Yes.
Seventeen hundred from infrastructure.
Yes.
And nineteen hundred from...
Infrastructure. Right. For a total of $6,570.
Right.
Yes. We've got a few thousand, about $9,000 in my budget that I transferred over. So, this is just a kind of surplus there to supplement that. So, we should be able to get a relatively quality used vehicle, looking for something in the SUV range so that we can have covered back, because the pickup truck, it's hard to haul around computer equipment when it's raining or snowing.
I'm going to put my business hat on again for a second, so forgive me. If you're, if you're only driving two miles to the government building, et cetera, are we as a city better off paying mileage?
We had, the reason we got this was because we were paying more for mileage than we were expecting it to be. In the grand scheme of things, it would be less, less expensive to have a vehicle, a staff vehicle. Plus, the, 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 staff tends to like to have a staff vehicle to use as opposed to driving a vehicle.
Oh, I would. I would too, but...
Yes. But on the days when, on the days when we have rounds, like we go to the zoo, up to Paleo Water Plant, that, that's, I think, 16 or 18 miles. It does add up when we have long sweeping, you know.
So, you've done the mail.
Right.
Yeah, we've looked at it holistically across the city, trying to think if we could go to a couple fleet vehicles to use instead of paying mileage, because those checks hurt. But it, holistically, we're not there yet, but, but for Bill, it makes sense.
Okay. That's my question. Do you have any?
No.
Okay. Good to go.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Made you nervous there for a minute, didn't it?
The thing, the thing, he doesn't have to come to my house to get mine. He, he's going to lock.
Okay.
Until now, or you... Oh, okay.
We have nothing else on the agenda, but I am going to be a little bit lenient today because usually, we don't allow comments other than what's on the agenda. But Michaeline was here last week?
Yes.
Last week, and made a presentation. So, I asked her if she could do a brief presentation tonight, and she's got some data for us, so...
I just want to hand out the petition and the map so you can see what I'm talking about. In my letter that I've written to reach you, it should only take 60 seconds or a few seconds.
You can take a long, you can have more than 60. Thank you.
Okay. As you can see, the orange line that comes to a cross, that is Isabella and North Division. Isabella is running east to west, and North Division is running north to south. And I'll start by telling you that 87% of Newtown residents are requesting that the pylons and the "do not enter" signs be removed from East Williams and from Oakdale. If you look at the map I provided to you, you will see where the two blue stars are marked. Those are the two "do not enter" signs and pylons that we're asking to be removed. We get about 22,000 cars per week that come through Isabella and North Division, and that's what the city counted when they did the, the traffic study that they did last year. They counted approximately 22,000 per week that are coming through there. So, we are very much bombarded with traffic. On page two of the handout, you will see a signed letter by Mr. Shaw, the owner of Tees Market. Mr. Shaw's customers are being forced to dangerously have to get back onto traffic after they go to his store to go to 13, and then to drive around to Isabella to then get home. On the next 14 pages after that, you'll see 157 signatures of Newtown residents only who want the two streets open. 100% of Oakdale residents signed the petition. That's up in the upper left-hand corner there. There's about 30 homes in the upper left-hand corner of the map. Every single one of those people who would be directly affected by taking down that "do not enter" sign, they agreed that they would like to see that gone, that they feel that that would help us out too by getting a little less traffic. And on the last page, you'll see that I even kept track of the 10 people that were against it and five people that were undecided. We are in no way asking you to decrease the traffic, decrease access to traffic whatsoever. We're not asking that. We are only asking that you be fair to all residents and open up all the access to all the city streets in Newtown. See, the conditions that existed years ago that warranted the streets to be closed, to be closed off, no longer exist today. Those were the things that happened many years ago. The reason they put that "do not enter" sign over in the Oakdale area was because there was a traffic light many years ago on the, right at the crossroad there of North Division and Isabella. And that, that traffic light is no longer there. When that light was there, a lot of the people from the Deerhead Hospital area were coming down North Division, and they were seeing that the light was turning red, so they would cut through Oakdale area, the Oakdale Street there in the upper left, and they would try to beat the light when they were going to the west side. So, that, I, that's what I'm being told is the reason the people on the corner went ahead and put up a sign there. So, we're just asking, you see all those little plots, those little, they're little lots everywhere, all those homes that are in, in our Newtown. We're just asking basically that everybody take their own cars down their own streets. And Mr. Tees Market is not the way it used to be many years ago. It used to be very rowdy, and that was what they were telling me, the reason why they put up the pylons and the "do not enter" sign there too, when there was a drug house that was very close by to that, that, those pylons, and they were going from his store to the drug house, back and forth, back and forth. Well, they got rid of that drug house many years ago. And Mr. Tees Market now is mostly foot traffic that come and go from in and out of there. He has a lot of people just walk to his store. So, that's, that's all I'm asking, is that maybe you'll take into consideration that we take down, it's time to take down those signs to allow people to get to their own homes. That will give us some relief on Isabella and North Division if you would do that. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Glance, do you have, where are we with this, in the city with that?
So, we've been working with the folks in Newtown for probably over a year now on some traffic issues. We've put up a stop sign, done a traffic count, worked to put up some signage for large trucks that we, we're hearing some concerns from in the neighborhood, but those didn't, every time we were out there, we didn't see any. But we've, we've been trying to work as, as much as, as we can with the folks in Newtown, and we're meeting next week with them, with members from the association to continue conversations.
Okay. I've got a couple of, a couple of questions, maybe we can. How many homes are in Newtown?
I, I did do a rough count, and there is about 185. There's quite a few that are empty, that are, are empty.
Well, just about 185 properties.
About 185 homes, yeah.
And how many signatures are on this?
Altogether, I went to about 172 of the homes. And that's why I recorded whoever said no, who said yes. There are a couple, there are a couple homes that two people from that home signed, the husband and wife signed.
There's quite a few that have two people signing. That's why I'm trying to get to what percentage of the homes.
Right. Well, some were renters, and they, there were like two people in the home or three people. They asked to all sign. Some were husband and wife that signed.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, at the same addresses, and there's quite a few.
Well, some are, some are, some buildings are apartment buildings, and that's why you'll see the same address but different apartments.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your input. Thank you, Julia.
I have a question. So, is this...
Could you come up to the...
Yeah, sure.
This is my husband, David.
So, what kind of rookie is that understanding the process? But what is the next step? Can she get that on record, the petition on record? And does she, and at this point, do you have, is there a vote taken as to whether to take a vote, or what's the next step?
Right now, there's nothing to take a vote on. It's in the hands of the city administration. And if they, if they choose to bring a resolution or an ordinance to the council, then the council will respond, have a, have an open session on it and a discussion about it, and then we go from there. That's the procedure.
Okay. So, just so I understand, the group that's going to make the decision whether to bring it to the council is...
The mayor and the, and his staff.
Okay. Will they look at this information that was provided in making that decision?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when would we know when that decision is made?
That's up to the mayor's office. I'm not sure.
We have our next meeting next week, so we'll have a better sense of what direction we're going in, but we'll stay in touch.
Would you, I have videos about the trucks when they put the signs for the trucks not to enter. I took videos, and the very next day, within 10 minutes, they reported the times, five semis came through there. They're not paying attention to the trucks do not enter signs. So, I just don't know if those videos would be helpful to your next meeting, or...
Sure.
Do you have a...
I'll grab me a card. Right, when we're done, yeah.
So, you're going to meet with the homeowners' association next week, correct?
Members from the association, I believe.
I think Chief Duncan, Tom are part of that meeting. I'm not sure if Judith is in, guiding to that meeting or not.
I think the mayor's meeting with some folks too.
Okay. It's a meeting.
Yeah.
Can we be part of that meeting as well with their petition?
If Judith was there, and I'm representing 87% of Newtown, could I also be involved?
There's your couple pieces.
We'll, we'll discuss it. We'll, we'll talk offline.
Chief of City Administrator, everything that you presented, you have copies of the information. I have all that information too.
Sure.
So, if we need some additional personal accounts of what they're seeing, then we'll do that. But we don't, we probably don't need 30 people around the table talking, but there's kind of just a couple items that we're discussing.
We have a conflict between the homeowners' association and the people who've signed the petition. So, we don't want, we don't want it one-sided. If the association's going to vote in one direction, our people are voting in a different direction. That's the, that's the question in our mind.
I'll make sure that everybody, all, all the information is presented accurately and fairly. And if we need additional people to come to that conversation, I'll...
That'd be great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.